You're live. Okay, good evening everyone. Today is June 24, 2025. I'd like to call tonight's meeting to order. And now can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing promotion, tenure, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or persons and collective bargaining negotiations pursuant to Article 14 of the Civil Service Law.
So moved, Carl. Second amendment.
Any discussion?
Carl.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The opposed? Motion carried. We're now in executive session.
The one down the South Road, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Wow.
I mean.
I like there.
Thirty.
Thirty more.
Yeah. If it's not, I have to use it.
All right, so at this time, I'd like to return to open session. If we can please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Oh.
Pledge of Allegiance.
We wish you the flag.
The United States of America.
And to the public.
Where which it stands.
One nation.
Under God.
Individually.
With justice. And justice for all.
Hey, we don't have any agenda modifications. Um, could I get a motion to adopt tonight's agenda?
No, Tivit's second call.
Why do we?
Session. All those in favor?
I.
Opposed? Motion carried. And just. Yeah, let me. Who, who, who did the first and the second on that one?
Tivit's first. First motion.
Oh, oh.
And just feel free to just say go down.
Yes, I'm gonna stand it from then.
Look at this. Look at this balloon.
There's no motion as we can see that. So upcoming events, we have this Friday, June twenty seventh is our FDR graduation. An FDR at six P M. That'll be outside, weather permitting. Right? Uh, Tuesday July first is our Board reorg meeting.
Wow.
And it said the location is F D E. No idea what that is, so I don't know if it's probably will be here, uh, maybe District Office. But.
Yes, reorg will be here.
Okay.
Sorry.
Yeah, so the reorg will be at District Office, um, and open session begins at seven P M. Uh, any other events anyone would like to share? All right, moving on to. Hi, Liz, your last one?
One.
All right, let's go.
Okay, so I'll start with Violet Affen. The fifth grade students and staff had an amazing day at the High Park Swimming Tennis Club on Friday, June twentieth. For the ending milestone trip. So it was a great way to end school year. I just don't remember mine. My time at the swimming tennis, and I remember when you have to, when you go to swimming tennis, you have to make sure you have a clean sheet and you never got in trouble or else you would have minutes taken off. I was never that kid, but I do remember seeing my classmates sitting down, so I hope Dolan was sitting down this year. About first, Liz, they were happy to host the return to the nest event. Graduating seniors today. I'll hang out on that, um, when I talk about FDR. Um, there's also several celebrations and award ceremonies leading up to the fifth grade moving up day on Thursday. Um, we'd like to thank the PTA for purchasing your books again this year for the fifth grade. And Ms. Inca for all the work she put into making the year look so great as they do. At North Park, uh, their pride is celebrating attendance, um, dance parties. So this was tied to the strive for ninety five percent initiative. Uh, all students who are present for ninety five percent of the school year or absent, uh, or absent nine days or less earn their certificate, a fidget, and a dance party with the staff. So that will be held tomorrow. Um, and another one, they would like to wish all the best to the fifth grade students who will be moving on to middle school in September. It's been a joy watching role models through our younger students. Um, I'm so proud of all that they have accomplished and can't wait to see all the things that they will do next. So to tie it all up, um, today at the R, uh, so there's regions going on, but our senior class is going through a lot of field trips. Because today was our back to the nest, so we got to visit. And all the other elementary schools, um, and it was a success for all of us. I know some people cried a little emotional, but that's okay. Um, but that's all. That's pride.
Okay, thank you.
We have the red to read though.
We have some additional pride, uh, to celebrate this evening. Uh, I'd first like to call, uh, to help me out with this, uh, next item. Uh, our votes from the High Park Educational Foundation.
Hi, there's only one folk here tonight, I think. Um, my name's Lori Oliver, and, uh, I'm no longer a resident of the school district, but I still am a retiree. Uh, fourteen years later, and yay for you guys that are retiring. Um, but I also am still, um, president of the High Park Ed Foundation, and, um, the Ed Foundation has, uh, again awarded, awarded teacher grants to faculty members. Uh, and they, they filled out an application and we, we reviewed them and so on, and, um, this year's teacher grants were to be inspired or linked to a component of of the High Park School District Portrait of a Graduate, either confident learner, responsible citizen, critical thinker, adaptive innovator, or effective communicator. Um, the Education Foundation has set aside five thousand dollars each year for projects, and the budget amount for each school is set according to the school's population. And the winners for this year are, and please stand if you're here, uh, Colleen Coburn for Netherwood Elementary. Winner as well. Would you, would you be able to take a couple of seconds and describe your project?
Oh, sure.
Okay.
Thank you so much for the grant. Um, we're going to be reading a bunch of exciting Who Was books thanks to this grant, and they are um, biographies about a bunch of different people, and they definitely link to the qualities of a High Park graduate because the students will be giving reports which will help them with their communication skills. These people are role models because they've been successful and worked hard. Um, so we're really excited for our project. Thank you so much.
Oh, you're welcome. Um, yeah, as a matter of fact, it's, uh, for four hundred and forty five dollars and thirty six cents. For sixty or more, sixty, more than sixty Who Was books featuring people such as Abraham Lincoln and Ariana Grande and the Wright Brothers and Venus and Serena Williams. So it's a, a, a great, um, a great, uh, group of people that are, that are role models. And the second, uh, set of pair of winners, Aaron Daniels and Karen Armstrong. There are, there are also repeat, repeat winners, and they've been running the Havlin Middle School Garden Project, and we've been funding them for the entire amount for, for Havlin, which I believe is eleven hundred dollars, eleven hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, and this year it'll be, be taking care of stone delivery, soil upgrade, new grow towers, seeds of sprinklers, et cetera. And, uh, that project has turned into an amazing, uh, community project, well, a school project. And, uh, I, I won't waste any more time on that right now, but they are, the, the two of them are just fabulous, and if you have a chance to talk to them about it, please do. And then the third winner is Natalie Ellis. Please describe your project.
So I actually put in two different grants for the total amount. One is for our book vending machine for the kids. Um, and the other is for the multicultural library in my classroom. So the multicultural library in my classroom, all the classroom teachers have access to it, so they come and they grab those read-alouds to do in their classrooms during S E L time or during their read-aloud time, and then the book vending machine the kids all love. We actually had the last group of kids, um, come through today for their summer reading books. So twice a year they get to choose books from the vending machine, and the kids like to see kids who look like them on the covers of the books. So thank you for funding again.
I'm just the return winner as well. That was, her grant is for four hundred and fifty two dollars for forty two books, and some of the titles are Amy Wu and the Ribbon Dance, The Night Before Aid, A Muslim Story, and Abuelita's Gift, A Dia de Muertos Story. Uh, just one thing I want to say before I go is that, um, since I believe twenty, twenty eighteen, we've been giving scholarships and, uh, teacher grants to the school district, and I think it totals about seventeen thousand dollars for the teachers and, uh, I've about, I don't have those papers in front of me here, but about six thousand dollars for the, the student scholarships. And, um, we really need community support, and I think our, our biggest problem is that we don't, we, we don't get enough, uh, respect, you know, like, uh, what was his name? Rodney Dangerfield. Respect, but I think enough people just don't know what we're doing or who we are, and, um, and I, I thank the school district for including us in the, uh, in the projects that, that are, um, about publicity and, um, and, uh, anything that you can do to help would be great. Thank you very much.
Just want to say thank you to Lori again and the entire High Park Educational Foundation. It's a lot of work that happens behind the scenes, and so we greatly appreciate everything that they do for our students and our teachers. Um, we have, uh, two more, uh, items before we transition to recognize a larger group. Um, so I think what I will do is start off first with our student board member. So, uh, this, this year is the last year that we have Lizbeth. Uh, Lizbeth has been working with the board for this past year. She has been the student voice. She has been the one to bring us the highlights that are happening throughout the district. She has, if you don't know, has won several awards, um, this past year, and we're extremely proud of her accomplishments. And we look forward to hopefully recruiting her to be a future teacher here in the district. So on behalf of the Board of Education, uh, this is a plaque thanking you for your service, for your time that you've devoted to the board, and, uh, we wish you all the best in your future endeavors. If you don't mind, everybody, here you go. Let's all get a picture with her.
Nice job, Liz.
He doesn't like him when he's standing.
I don't need to stand up. These things recline so far back.
Good, right. All right, everybody shift left.
Congratulations. Ready to go. I think so. And the next point of pride, this is a, a, a new award that the Board of Education has elected to present to, um, a student who has exhibited, uh, with exhibited civic engagement, uh, throughout various committees, uh, throughout the district, throughout the years, who has been very consistent. Um, this individual is being recognized for his high level of participation in district committee and events. The Board of Education thanks you. Your efforts contribute toward our goal of making the district and community an innovative learning environment for all. And so on behalf of the Board of Education, we would like to present this to Roman Pemberton.
Get a photo. Picture.
She can, she can. That's right.
Did you get a handshake or a hug?
Oh, my finger is in the top.
Congratulations. Good job, Rachel Moore.
Did I hear you wanted to give a speech? All right, any more, uh, pride?
I think Liz, all right.
When are we doing? Okay, so now the big pride.
Want to call up, uh, Mr. Ryan Judge?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Ryan Judge. I'm the Chief of Human Resources and Professional Development for the District. And, uh, tonight we come together as a school district family to recognize an extraordinary group of people whose dedication, compassion, and unwavering service have shaped generations of students, staff, and really our entire school community. whose dedication, compassion, and unwavering service have shaped generations of students, staff, and really our entire school community. Retirement marks the end of a professional chapter, but more importantly, it honors the legacy built through every lesson taught, through every challenge faced, and every heart touched along the way. This evening, we pause to say thank you. Thank you for the years of hard work. Thank you for the laughter shared, and thank you for the countless lives forever changed. Let's begin by celebrating the remarkable careers of our retirees, the very people who have helped to make our schools what they are today. So when I call your name, if you're present, please stand for a round of applause. And a member of our HR staff will deliver you a small token of our appreciation. If the individual is not here, I ask that we still clap because that's the least we can do for, for a career of dedication and service. First, we have Diane Christensen. Catherine Choinski. Michael Serencion. Victoria DiMarco. We know she's not here because she's in Philadelphia now, but can we give a round of applause for Melinda De Mayo? Jeffrey Drophour. Marion Laluna.
Thank you.
Stephanie Latuso. I know Trez McKenna is here. Justin Murphy. Elizabeth O'Brien. James Osborne. Dennis Russell. Margaret Schmuffenig. Dan Smalley. Ruth Craig. Joanne Wood. Last but not least, last but not least, Lisa Yurek.
Jonathan.
Thank you.
We also have another special individual to celebrate tonight. Uh, we would like to recognize our Assistant Superintendent for Pupil Services, Melissa Lawson, for achieving uh tenure as Assistant Superintendent. So at this time, we would like to take a little bit of a break so that folks can celebrate. So over in this corner over here, we have a nice photo booth with fun hashtags like hashtag retired, hashtag FDR, so on and so forth. There, if you can brave a warm beverage with caffeine, there is a coffee station. But more importantly, around the corner, um, there's some nice infused cold water, but cupcakes that are absolutely delectable. Um, so at this time, I believe we'll pause for the celebrations.
Sounds good. Let's eat. Congrats. We'll be back in seven minutes, folks. We'll be in ten minutes. Congrats.
Oh, my God. For your, by circumstance. I'll try. I was so sad. Yeah. Meeting with our, so we could do.
Good, how are you? Oh, my God. It's only been a few months. That just made me think.
Making our way back to Virginia to see his. Got being boozled by our daughter.
Don't leave us.
Other day, it's just constantly running.
Thanks, Olivia. Who's the record?
That's awesome.
I know, right? Happy job. Uh, I should too. I mean, well, I'm saying, you know, I said forty years I deserved red building. One memories, right?
Um, I haven't been yet, but I plan to, you know, to bring it up. He used to go to the ones who were faster. Officially, like consistency from that. We didn't have to enjoy it. That's Jersey. I, I thought it was Jersey.
Hey folks, they're gonna get started.
Yeah, I think the key is. We have to go. We have to go. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Ready to uh reconvene? All right, so we're gonna move on to uh seven point one, our superintendent's report with Dr. Roman.
We have two items to share with the board and the community. Uh, first of all, I want to uh recognize the students that were involved in the FDR American uh Studies Student Film Screening. Uh, had the opportunity to visit um Upstate Film Festival along with uh Ryan uh who was there and Christine. I saw Christine there. Uh, I was amazed by the documentaries that the students put together. These were professionally done. Like, they could have gotten paid for these documentaries. One of the groups that they highlighted were the Food Service Department. And just highlighting the intricacies involved in serving uh three thousand plus students uh was just an amazing way to capture the amazing work. And so just want to recognize students for that. And then um had the opportunity to um be the keynote along with Dr. Penny from uh Hudson, Superintendent from Hudson, at the Bard Early College Program Completion um Ceremony. Uh, it was a really nice ceremony on the campus. Um, and I just want to give kudos to the students that actually participated in that program. So I learned that, you know, while many of the peers are at the high school and pursuing just the high school um credits, these students actually wanted to challenge themselves and earn uh above and beyond that. And so they accumulated quite a number of college credits. So I want to give uh kudos to um, to that group of, of scholars. And that concludes my, my two items.
Thank you. Moving on to seven point two, our district comprehensive improvement plan with Ms. Turner and Mr. Darling. Two things and the Ralph R. Smith School Comprehensive.
Okay, so good evening, President Zagorski, Vice President Tibbetts, fellow trustees, Dr. Roman colleagues. It's an honor to present to you this evening alongside Principal Darling um our DCEP and SEP plans. The focus of our presentation is our improvement process and the plans that we will implement next year to help our students. The focus of our presentation is our improvement process and the plans that we will implement next year to help our students continue to strive and, um, succeed. So we always start with our vision and mission and one thing that anchors our work is that we empower all learners to be successful members of our dynamic society. So you may recall from the March presentation when we did an overview of and an update of our current DCEP plan that New York State Accountability System currently holds districts accountable based on these four indicators. Weighted average achievement in ELA in math in grades three through eight, uh, core subject performance in ELA in math grades three through eight, English language proficiency proficiency and the nicest lot and chronic absenteeism. So currently, based on those indicators, one of our schools, Ralph R. Smith, is identified as a school that is targeted support and improvement school based on the subpopulation of students with disabilities. And that means that we're a district, a targeted district. So anytime a district has a school identified at any level, the district becomes a targeted district. Okay. So when we started our work this year, we had an implementation plan and then our process is to take a look at where we are and continue to develop a plan for next year. So we really started looking at our proficiency levels, uh, for ELA because that's where I identified. And this chart that you see here, um, we really dug deep into what the percentages meant. So we'll take a look at third grade as an example, twenty-eight percent of our students proficient. But what did that really mean for us? It meant that sixty-four out of two hundred and twenty-seven students met proficiency. So we really started taking a look at what that meant for our students with disabilities as well. So you can see they're highlighted here in the gray, not, not really highlighted, but we popped them out in the presentation. So you can see for third grade out of forty-one students, only one student was proficient on the state assessment in third grade. And I won't continue to read out the present, I mean, the data, but that's where we started to look at what does it really mean for our students? How many students does that mean? And, and go away from percentiles.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Um, so this is, this slide is depicting the district-wide students with disability performance year over year. So you'll see in the top, uh, row that students with disabilities' performance on the ELA assessment through New York State in two thousand and twenty-three, the spring of two thousand and twenty-three, uh, compared to the, the bottom row, which is students with disabilities' performance in two thousand and twenty-four. And so one thing we've talked about at board meetings a little bit is just looking at cohort information. So I would encourage you to look not necessarily up and down, but, uh, across or adjacent to. So for example, in third grade in twenty-three, just the students that took the New York State ELA, zero percent of them were proficient in terms of our students with disabilities subgroup. Then if you look at that same cohort, so fourth grade in two thousand and twenty-four, you'll see that we didn't see improvement across the district in that cohort. Um, and so there's a lot of information here to, to look through in terms of the specific subgroup. There are areas to highlight, um, fourth grade, for example, in twenty-three, that is the fifth grade cohort in two thousand and twenty-four grew from fifth, uh, five percent proficiency to nine percent proficiency. You can also see in two thousand and twenty-three, our fifth graders scored at two percent. In two thousand and twenty-four, that same subgroup in the middle school scored ten percent proficient. Uh, so that's something that is a theme in this presentation that we're not where we want to be, but we, we are seeing, uh, the trajectory in the right direction across multiple measures that we're, that we're looking at.
I was just comparing with like state numbers. Do we have that data?
Uh, not necessarily off the top of my head, um, but typically students with disabilities are performing at a lower proficiency than, than general education students across the state. I would need to look at specific averages for the New York State ELA.
But when the state breaks it down to identify as a school as, as needing help, it, they don't parse out students with disabilities in that. They don't, they don't break it down in that way. Is that correct?
They do.
They do?
Mm-hmm.
So, so in other words, if we're an identified school, that suggests that our students with disabilities are doing more poorly than other schools.
Correct.
Thank you.
So the way they identify us is they put us in quartiles and the first quartile, uh, when they, they calculate all the scores, they average all the school districts in New York State and then they chunk them. And if you get a level one in both proficiency and achievement, then you're identified and to be a level one, you have to be in the bottom zero to ten percent proficiency of schools across New York State.
So just focusing in on Ralph R. Smith specifically in reading, um, this is a look at our NWEA MAPS growth data, mostly because it's the most up to date. We won't receive the state test data for ELA until late summer, early fall next year, um, which you might remember last August, we had presented some of that information as part of our, as part of our set presentation at that time. So in terms of the MAPS growth data, this is showing all students in the spring of two thousand and twenty-four on our reading assessment versus the spring of two thousand and twenty-five at Ralph R. Smith. So you'll see we had a modest gain, uh, from thirty-sixth percentile on average to fortieth percentile, uh, which is something that we're proud of. But, and it speaks to the, the, the work of our district and the teachers, um, and students certainly, but something we're looking to continue to gain on going into next year, uh, in terms of our momentum in literacy specifically and really hoping to end at the forty-fifth percentile, uh, in the least next, next year. And then with a more specific focus on students with disabilities at just Ralph R. Smith, you'll see on this chart, there's the performance depicted, um, for all students with disabilities. So in spring of two thousand and twenty-four, the average score was the ninth percentile in reading. That grew over the last year and that, that's the same cohort of students, um, that, that took it in twenty-four versus twenty-five to thirteenth percentile on average. So a four percentile, uh, gain there across the building as a whole within that subgroup. And then I wanted to highlight fourth and fifth grade specifically because those were the two grade levels that we saw the most growth over the last year. So our fourth graders, uh, current fourth graders at the end of third grade in spring of twenty-four, their average achievement was third percentile. And currently at the end of fourth grade, their average achievement is eleventh percentile. Uh, and for our fifth grade cohort, at the end of fourth grade, they were in the second percentile. Now they're at the twelfth percentile. So again, just wanna reiterate that we are seeing that positive growth from the work teachers are, are putting in and students are putting in, but something that with our SEP plan going into next year, we wanna continue to build upon.
Okay. So as our district.
We tracked the data, sorry. Um, so you, you say like we're, you know, the, the fifth grade, do we look at how, how they're doing in sixth grade as well or do we stop?
Uh, we do systematically, um, so I worked with Mr. Shaw to look at how is that same cohort, really all, across all grades, not just fifth to six, but K through five for us. How, how is that cohort tracking? Um, you know, because as we've talked about before, it's when we look at third grade year over year, it's a whole different group of students, potentially a different group of teachers if there were grade level changes. So we find it's most valuable to track that cohort.
Right, so the, the, the two percentile there from two thousand and twenty-four is now sixth grade, right?
Correct.
Uh, no, so this is, this is our current fifth grade students this spring tested twelfth percentile on average. When I, when you look back at that same cohort's test results from two thousand and twenty-four, when they were fourth graders.
They were third.
They were second percentile.
So that's this, so if you look at the fourth grade, the third percentile was when they were in third grade and the eleventh percentile is now as fourth graders. It's just the way the chart is done.
Oh.
I tried to streamline it for you so, so that.
So that's not how, so I, I assume that the fourth grade for two thousand and twenty-four, the third is now the fifth, the, you know, the twelve. I, I thought it went from third to twelve. Yeah, diagonal, right? So, oh, I see what you did. Okay.
So it's cohort, these are cohort.
This is cohort, yeah. And for each.
But it's not really for, like, so the spring of twenty-four, they were really a grade back.
The spring of twenty-four, they were in third grade.
Right.
But it's just showing our, that current cohort of, of fourth grade students, fifth grade students.
Okay.
So as a district and so our charge is to come together as a district instructional leadership team, which is comprised of teachers and administrators and take a look at the district level to build a plan that supports our, our building level plan. And one of the things that we use to anchor our goals after looking at the assessment data is this pyramid, which you may be familiar with, which is an MTSS pyramid. So typically in a healthy system, students are, our goals are met at tier one, eighty to ninety percent of your students. Okay, every school district wants a hundred percent of their students proficient at tier one, but the reality is there's always our children who need a little extra support. And so this is a good measure to say we should be at eighty to ninety percent. That is our goal, that students should be eighty, we should have eighty to ninety percent of our students proficient. So we use this as our guiding question when we began developing our plan is where does the data indicate we are in reality to this goal? Then we started taking a look, the state identifies key strategies that are research-based that you can use to improve your practices. And so we took a look at what we were currently doing in our system and then what we needed to do to enhance, um, our outcomes for students. We didn't want to impose too much on the system and create initiative fatigue, but we also wanted to focus on improving our academic outcomes. So we identified, um, these indicators and so we have two, they're numbered this way because you have some that are instructional focused and some that are community focused. And then MTSS is one of the things that we already started, so that's why, um, it was up there. And then we really focused on our evidence-based instruction, which is the high-quality instructional materials. You know, we have the literacy initiative that we've been focusing on all year. And then as an administrative team, we came together and said, okay, we have literacy instructional practices focused on K five. What could we do system-wide to have a bigger impact on student outcomes? And so we chose three instructional strategies, which is goals, explicit instruction and feedback. And we'll talk more about why we chose that in a later slide. Authentic assessments started this year, so we continued, we chose to continue to expand that. And then restorative practices, community, schools initiatives and professional learning communities. Um, we then took a look at the data to try and set our goals. So in the DCEP plan, you'll see these two percent goals presented. We, uh, if you were on the evening DLT team, you know, there was a huge focus on literacy and the research around, uh, readers being proficient by grade three. So we took a look at the gap between the eighty percent and the twenty-eight percentile and divided it across four years was about thirteen percent. So we said, okay, for next year, we wanna see a ten to fifteen percent increase in third grade proficiency. And then because gaps are bigger in the upper grades, we said, okay, let's do five percent increase in the other grades, but we're gonna really hone in on that early literacy and focus on third grade proficiency.
So, um, there was a little bit of a difference this year in terms of the state's expectations on how to develop the SEP plan. In the past, there's been a lot of, uh, freedom to come up with the different interventions that the building is, or district is gonna, uh, implement. This year they provided, which I found really helpful, uh, of, a more all-encompassing list of recommended strategies that we were able to choose from, uh, because they're all evidence-based. So the state did that legwork, um, and then our, our committee, who I wanna acknowledge, spent a lot of time looking through the different, uh, evidence-based or research-based strategies and picked the ones that we felt would give us, yield the most, uh, student growth. And so the three strategies that we chose to include in, in our SEP plan for next year, um, are listed here. The first one and, and what I would argue is the most important one for, for our building currently is high-quality instructional materials. And so that's pertaining to the implementation, uh, or adoption of a new literacy curriculum, which we, we started that work with UFLI as our phonics program this year. And then I know at the last board meeting, there was conversation and presentations about, uh, HMH that the board, um, you know, was able to have discussion about or hear information about. And so we're really, uh, gonna be leaning into that next year to make sure that teachers have the, the training, the coaching and the support and resources that they need to be successful with implementing a new program and all that entails. Um, the second, uh, strategy that we identified was expanding access to high-quality out-of-school time programs, which is something we've, we've done a little bit over the last few years, but offering a more structured before-school enrichment opportunity for students, um, on about, we're looking at a twelve-week period. Um, and we would basically have six sections, so one class at each grade level where teachers from that grade level, um, assuming they're interested in applying for that, would be able to work with students in reading for, uh, an additional hour at least, uh, once a week. So we think that giving them that extra time in addition to the new literacy program, uh, would, would yield great results for our students. And then the last strategy that we identified as a, as a, uh, TSI committee was just expanding our work, um, in the building and in the district with the multi-tiered system of supports. Um, and I'll talk a little bit about each of those things on the next few slides. So in terms of that first key strategy for next year, uh, the high-quality instructional materials, there are a lot of different action items, both at the building level and at the district level related to that. But the key, the key ideas are making sure that teachers have that structured professional development. And then once they have the, uh, the professional development on how to actually utilize the program, then turning that into more of an embedded coaching model where they can have conversations with, um, some representatives from the company about specifically, what are the outcomes I'm seeing from my students related to the program? And how can we adjust our instruction to better meet their needs based on what we're seeing? So we've worked with, uh, Jess Turner and Jen Kreiser on looking at additional coaching and PD opportunities through HMH to supplement what the, what all elementary teachers are getting, but to really cater it to specifically students with disabilities at Ralph R. Smith. And what, what else can we do extra to support a very specific subgroup? And so there's a lot of information there, um, but in terms of the indicators that we'll be looking at to measure success, uh, we have some pretty specific goals within the SEP plan itself. Um, but the main one and the easiest one to track is just student, student reading proficiency. So when we look at our, our NWEA MAPS growth scores and when, when we look at our New York State ELA, uh, scores, we wanna see movement in a positive direction. And we saw a four percentile, uh, gain this year. We hope to see at least a five percentile gain over the next, uh, school year as well. Uh, the second key strategy is that expansion of enrichment opportunities for students before school. Um, so we'd be looking to provide a one-hour, uh, additional enrichment reading time with, with a highly qualified teacher, um, before school over the course of the school year. Um, and some of the things that we'd be looking at for that, for that time are daily attendance rates, so making sure that students that are signed up and enrolled in that are attending, otherwise it's not gonna, it's gonna benefit them. Um, and then looking closely at, you know, if there's eight or so students in each grade level participating in that, what is their rate of growth versus their peers, um, that are, that are not participating in that small group extended time? Uh, because obviously we would hope to see more growth from, from the students to indicate that that's working properly. Um, and lastly, just in terms of each of these goals, we would have some anecdotal, uh, pulse surveys or, or staff surveys that would go out on a, on a regular basis, which is something we, we do this year as well, uh, both at the building and at the district to make sure that we're getting feedback from staff, um, on potential challenges, on, on areas of opportunity that we can work, um, work on and also recognizing, uh, areas of strength. And the last strategy is really an expansion of all the work the district, uh, has, has started with the MTSS process. This year, we really focused in on a PBIS initiative, um, and I have to shout out Ms. Lorenz and our, and our school team for all the work that they've done with, uh, whole school assemblies, different award recognition programs at the building, um, our hoot loop cards that have been a big hit this year. And we wanna continue to build on that, um, next year and ultimately make sure that the progress we're seeing is, is rooted in, in data. Um, and that would look like a decrease in suspensions, um, more positive referrals, which we've seen a big spike in over the last two years in our, in our hoot loop cards. Um, and then obviously increased student perceptions. So when they answer survey questions about how they belong in school or if they feel like they belong in school or if their peers treat them with respect, we wanna consistently see improvement and growth in, in those areas, uh, as a result of these initiatives.
Okay. So then in, on top of the school plan, the district is required to create our plan. And then, um, the overall purpose of the district plan is to support the school plan, but also what we did as a committee. But also what we did as a committee is took a look at our blueprint for excellence, our district strategic plan and said, how do we make all these plans come together so that the system isn't spread across and going in different directions, but there's alignment and we're moving forward in the same direction? So you'll see a lot of consistencies and overlaps with our blueprint for excellence, the set plan, and then the district improvement plan. And so and also, again, like I said before, with a keen emphasis on instructional strategies and high impact instructional strategies. So it wasn't what we said or what we think will help our students. It's what research and evidence says what will help our students. And you'll see what we, why we chose goals, explicit instruction and feedback is because the research says if you focus on those areas, typically you'll see a twenty three percent increase in student performance in one year by just focusing on those things. So that that's our hope. So you can see we have uh the different categories moving across our different priority areas. So the student experience is instruction and then promoting the mutual accountable learning community. We have the professional communities, community schools and restorative practices. And then that continuous improvement framework, kind of our MTSS work and how we're going continually remove barriers for all students aligns with priority area three. And then what we did as a committee, teachers and administrators together said, what are the action steps that we need to have to ensure that we implement the key strategies we chose? What are the supports that we would need? And then what is the data we're going to use to monitor progress? So something that's different than what we did la- last year, we looked at the different areas of data. You may recall like perceptual data, academic data, um, uh, other data type, it's coming on my brain, demographic data, right? We would look at it separately across the year. And then we would build plans based on those stagnant data areas. What we're gonna do next year is we said, these are areas we want to improve. Every time we come together, we're gonna look at that data based on our goal. So our goal is ten to fifteen percent student performance in third grade. We'll be looking at that achievement data across the year using the N W A maps. So we can say, how are we moving towards that? And using that uh improvement cycle, is there something we need to adjust in our in our actionable goals? So if you have the coaching coming in from H M H in third grade, we haven't like we're too far away from that tenth percentile by the middle of the year, taking a look at what the students are doing in the class and what do we need to adjust instruction so we can hit our goals by the end of the year? And again, I'm not gonna read all of these to you. You can see the ones that are expanding are the ones that were currently in the system that we want to continue to develop. Professional learning communities was a huge one. Every time we come together as a collective, whether it's in a small group, a grade level team, a department meeting, that's a professional learning community. Um, we don't, we're gonna expand that uh next year. So we don't have formalized forms for P L Cs, but we want to continue to develop that process. And P L Cs are actually, if you look at the research, are the highest impact on student outcomes when teachers come together and believe that they can have an impact. And so you can see uh the achievable goals and supports that we need in place. And again, that continuous reflective data process across the year. And again, the MTSS is uh the last one that we chose with uh a request for a multi year plan, we're implementing branching lines. Um, to, and then there's so some specific data that we can use to monitor that progress. And then lastly, we just wanted to remind the board that um in order to become unidentified, you have to meet proficiency levels for two years in a row. And they are changing the accountability system next year. So the students that just sat for grades three through eight E L A in math and uh our graduation rate and other areas, this will be our indicators for next year. So the N size decreased. So it used to be you had to have thirty students for that subpopulation to become in your accountability system. Now it's dropped down to twenty. Um, core subject performance was the same. Weighted average achievement, we always had for E L A and math, but they're adding, they're reintroducing science at the elementary level. So our fifth grade science proficiency will be included in our report card next year. Social studies is being reintroduced reintroduced at the high school. Um, English language proficiency was there, our graduation rate, college and career ready and civic readiness is going to be reintroduced. And then attendance, they're gonna be making a change. So just a reminder, we said it in March, but just so we know, if we come up identified in other areas in other buildings, they've changed the parameters. And that's it. Thank you. Any questions?
So to get out off the list, you said we have to be proficient.
Two years in a row.
And this is year one?
No.
Uh, the twenty three, twenty four school year was the year we were identified. Uh, so this, this is an opportunity for if we made growth or we're not in the bottom ten percent this year, we would need to be above the bottom ten percent next year, and then the state would uh take us off the list.
And you don't know where we are until the state collects all the data.
Right.
Of course. And when when might you hear that?
We usually hear in November. And then it's it's um not, we can't share it in November and it becomes shareable around January.
Official designation is is later on in the year. We'll get a better sense of where the state testing scores are like late August.
We'll we'll have a sense, but they won't have an official, I guess.
The other thing to keep in mind is if you've been identified for a subpopulation and that subpopulation comes off the list, but you're identified in another area, you're still identified. You don't come off the list, the the clock doesn't start over.
But only for the new group, the new sub.
Oh, well, actually, no, it's for your building. So, I mean, we didn't go into it, but you see the different levels with T S I is targeted school for improvement. If you continue to become identified in other areas across years, you go up to the C S I, which is when the state gets involved and you have, you know, state led supplemental supports and stuff like that. So your goal is to get all subpopulations off so you don't move up the list. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, moving on to eight point one, can I get a motion to enter public participation?
So moved to it.
All those in favor?
I.
Opposed? Motion carried. So uh, we have a total of three minutes per speaker for a total of twenty one minutes. Will be allotted for the first segment of public participation on the agenda. And for the second segment, a total of three minutes per speaker for a total of twelve minutes will be allotted. The segment uh of time may be modified by the board as deemed appropriate. Board members and the superintendent will have the privilege of asking clarifying questions of any person who addresses the board. Please provide your name and address when you reach the podium. Would anyone like to address the board? Okay, at this time, we will close public participation. We got the nine point one board subcommittee reports and professional development updates. So any subcommittees meet?
All here committees. Met yesterday, um, couple of areas of, especially in the uh transportation department, some things we're looking into and also I I guess you'd call it cybersecurity with these false emails going around and targeting the school districts to um, masking themselves as offenders and running steel accounts. So uh, putting uh things in place to to avoid that, do telephone confirmation, just don't respond to anything on just an email. There's gotta be a two step certification. Um, policy committee also met yesterday.
But just one more thing on the audit committee, we we have the R F P out for the external audits. We have four responses back and um two of them are new newcomers to um to us, like we have, we've never heard of them. So Linda is going to ask for um kind of like an interview with them so we can see what they have to offer. And then um, so then we'll have four to choose from um going forward uh for the 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 next year's external audit. Um, we're required every five years to put out an R F P for a new, for our external audit. Doesn't have to be a new one, but we just put out the R F P for um external audits and that that's this year. And we will have a corrective action plan for the internal audit that Carl mentioned about the um, the the bus um policies that we have. Um, not so much policies, the procedures and paperwork and stuff. So there were some findings, um, so we do have to submit a corrective action plan to the state. Um, so Linda is working up on that, so we'll see that at a future board meeting.
We get a report, we get a we get a full report from that external auditor at some point, right?
Or we.
Yeah. Well, this one was the, for this was internal audit, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But the answer is yes, we we do get full reports for both.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
When they're ready.
Yeah.
Right now, the internal audit is just draft mode.
Good.
Then she has to submit the corrective action plan. Then it gets it gets approved and then it goes from draft to official. And that's when it comes to the to the board, the whole board.
Um, policy committee, there's some uh second consideration tonight, which most of it centers around uh student security of information. Uh, get just some cleanup according to this, but requirements and adjustments, nothing to make sure. Two new ones coming down for the fall that will be an issue. One is the the cellphone ban that has been mandated by the state. And how appropriate that yesterday was also uh talking about uh temperatures in schools and what to do and different options. So we need to have a policy about that. Right now, there's only one for athletic events. And if it's over ninety six degrees, they.
Okay, um, any other committees?
Well, related to technology committee, I attended the uh Mid Hudson uh Artificial Intelligence Summit at Marask College recently, I got my Maraskear on and so forth. So the invitees were from school districts, government, and so we had presentations from that range from I B M to the New York State Police to NuVant Health and so forth. And a lot of it spoke to what Carl was talking about, to the audit committee being aware of the the pros and cons of artificial intelligence and and some of the creative things for our classrooms, but also some of the things to be aware of. You know, the the bishing and so forth and and not just not answering emails, but being very, very careful of what you say when you pick up a phone call and having your voice recorded and and then uh, you know, so forth. So um, so that was well attended by people from around the area and uh something we can talk about in our technology committee.
Okay, that's thanks. Anyone else? All right. Uh, moving on to nine point two, any uh board discussion, including um consent agenda items? So we we did get a um thank you card here that during, I'll read during board discussion. So it says, dear High Park Central School District Board of Education, thank you so much for the National Honor Society Award. I feel so honored by your recognition. I appreciate your generous gift card. It will help me prepare as I move into Siena College in the fall. Sincerely, Sophia Conway. All right, any other, no other discussion? All right, moving on to ten point one, can I get a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
So moved, second.
All those in favor?
I.
I. Opposed? Motion carried. Moving on to, you good?
Um, see good.
Okay. Okay.
That one's R and.
Ed? Yeah, you got it.
All right, I'll go back to it.
I don't. Okay.
Yeah, I don't know why you sent it.
Do you have to knock it off?
Yeah. I can handle this. That's all gone.
All right, moving on to eleven point one, um, this is the residency hearing appeal that we um approved uh last uh board meeting in executive session. Uh, so can I get a motion to approve this appeal or this resolution?
So moved, Margaret.
Second to it.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
I.
Opposed? Motion carried. Can I get a motion to enter our second public participation?
So moved. Second to it.
Stop saving. Not a good saving now.
I think those are the copies.
Yeah. Eleven point one was Margaret.
You 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 did the.
Margaret and.
Yeah.
You did, right?
I do, right? That's you, okay.
Yeah.
I always get you and me confused.
Yeah.
Why not?
Okay, went to twelve point one.
Twelve point one, this is for uh public participation, so I did, did we have a motion in a second?
Not yet.
Yeah.
Okay, can I get a motion for public part, the second public participation?
Don't move tibbits.
Tibbits.
Margaret.
Paul.
Carl. All those in favor?
I.
Opposed? Motion carried. Same rules apply. Would anyone like to address the board? Room?
You don't have an exception.
This time we'll close public participation. Um, any other matters deemed necessary by the board? All right. Uh, no need for a second uh executive session, so at this time, can I get a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
So moved it.
Second, Carl.
All those in favor?
I'm.
Opposed? Motion carried. Meeting adjourned.